W, we good to start? Okay. All right, very good. So the time is seven oh three. I will call this Town of Bridgewater Town Council meeting to order. Please stand for saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome, everybody. And congratulations to our new councilors that have been newly sworn. We will start off with approval of minutes from our previous meeting. Again, the new councilors were not here yet, so we'll have you abstain. Do we hear a motion to accept the minutes from the April twenty-third meeting?
So moved.
Second. Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Motion carries. Next is announcements from the president, which is going to be our reorganization of the council. I will believe we'll turn it back over to our acting town clerk. Merrily, please come back up, please.
Not really the acting town clerk. I'm just the old town clerk getting ready to leave.
I didn't want to say that either.
I can speak the truth. I can speak the truth. Congratulations to all of you. So we are going to do the election for the president of the council, and nominations are open for president of the council.
I would nominate councillor Kevin Perry for the office of president.
Okay. And I saw another hand raised at the same time. Were you doing the same thing? And you're nominating Mark Lindy? We have two nominations for president?
Second.
Oh, yeah, we didn't get a second for either. Sorry, somebody's second for Kevin?
Second.
Thank you. And Adeline, you're seconding for Mark?
For Mark Lindy.
Sorry, I didn't get that right. So we have two. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close those nominations, and we'll ask for, I think, a hand count for the vote. Since Kevin was nominated first, let's say all in favor of Kevin Perry as the president of the council, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Am I counting correctly? And all in favor of Mark Lindy for president of the council, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Yeah, there are nine people, so I don't know. What do we do when there's a tie?
You have to have a vote.
I'll vote for councillor Perry.
Okay, councillor Perry, congratulations on being president of the council. And can you now run the election for the vice president, and then we'll reorganize the seats?
I would nominate councillor Paul Murphy for the office of vice president.
Okay, that goes to?
That's fine, we have a motion. Do I have a second for councillor Paul Murphy? Have a second?
I would like to nominate Mark Lindy for vice president.
There's also a nomination for Mark Lindy as vice president. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So again, being that Paul was the first one nominated, we'll go with a hand vote. All those in favor of Paul Murphy being vice president, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. One, two. Paul, you should vote for yourself. One, two, three, four, five, okay. Five out of the nine, that would secure the vote, so Paul Murphy will be vice president of the council.
Congratulations. Now we're going to get you in your new seats. You'll see on the front of each of your, well, you can't see it, but you can see across the aisle, and know that there's a number on the front of each desk, except for the council president and vice president, because they'll be sitting where Adeline and Mary are sitting right now.
I don't, right?
Thank you.
Okay, so we have seven, six, five, four, three.
What's the ace, Juan?
I get four.
Merrily, what's the ace? What's the ace? That one?
That's one.
All right. Back to my own spot.
Let's see. All in one. Oh, no, sorry. Hi.
Hi.
Everybody's sitting here now.
Yeah.
All right.
Hello.
Everyone all settled back in? All right. Thank you again, Merrily, for helping us with all that, and thank you again to all the councilors. Again, great, great start with a nice competitive vote, and I thank you for your trust in being president of the council going forward. Let's see, moving forward, proclamations. We do not have any proclamations this evening, so we will move forward with citizens' open forum. Please come on up, state your name and address, and remember to keep it to three minutes if possible.
Oh, I'll be much less than three minutes, don't worry, Mr. Perry. Dr. Perry, I should say. Tim Fitzgibbon, South Drive, Bridgewater. Congratulations to the three new councilors publicly. Congratulations to you, Dr. Perry, and you, Mr. Murphy, on being elected president and vice president of the council. I'm really here for the budget hearing for the school committee. I'm also the vice chair of the school committee. Ms. Rachel King is here with us. She is the chair of the budget committee. Unfortunately, the superintendent has personal matters to attend to today and couldn't make it, so he's stuck with us. And so if there's any questions that come up during the hearings, we'll do our best to answer them. But I would ask the council at this time if you could just make a motion to allow Ms. King to speak as a non-resident of Bridgewater, so that should a question come up, she could come up and not have a motion each time.
Certainly. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Yeah, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposeds? Motion carries? Would you like to speak now or for later on?
I'm holding on.
All right, very good. We'll hold that for later. Anybody else would like to come up and speak?
Good evening, Edivaldi, Boxwood Lane. First, I'd like to congratulate councillors Ellenberg, McGrath, and Sturgills on your recent victories, and remind all of you, as well as all the other councilors, that your primary role is to represent and be the voice of your constituents. Today is a new beginning for the council, and each of you should have a strategy for how to engage with citizens to gather input on matters affecting the town. This strategy should include face-to-face meetings, the use of social media, and any other means appropriate for giving citizens a voice in what you do, above and beyond citizens' comments at town council meetings. You might also want to consider doing an online citizen survey to gather input that would help direct your work during the year. Please think creatively. I wish you all the best in the months ahead, and thank you for your service to the town. I would also like to address several questions to the town manager and the town attorney, specifically, on April twenty-fourth, the day after the last council meeting, Mr. Dutton released a state of the town address on the town's Facebook page, which was very informative. However, I believe that the charter may have been violated by that address, in that the council president was not part of that address. Article two, section, two dash two, section two dash three C five of the charter states the following: "The council president, in conjunction with the town manager, shall prepare and deliver a yearly state of the message, uh, state of the town message to the town council and the citizens of the town describing the state of the town. The message will address the financial state of the town, the strengths of the town, and the areas that need attention, as well as potential opportunities for the betterment of the town. The state of the town message should also set the agenda and goals for the town council and the town manager for the ensuing year." So my questions are the following: Why wasn't this address done with the council president as required by the charter? Number two, did the council president have any involvement in preparing the address? Number three, if some arrangement was made ahead of time with the council president to be absent, how does this align with the intent of the charter for the address to be a joint effort? And number four, also, since this address is supposed to set the agenda and town goals for the council and town manager for the year, why wasn't it done back in January at the beginning of the year? My final question is more directed for the town attorney. When a question, when a charter violation occurs, what happens? Are there any ramifications? I believe there is a pending charter recommendation made by the last charter review committee that pertains to this, but in the interim, what is your position on how to address any charter violations? Thank you, and I look forward to your responses to my questions.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to come up, please?
Good evening, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. I first want to welcome to the new councilors. Looking forward to the next year and years, and how everybody does, so welcome to a new start. I just wanted to just rehash a couple things. I still am waiting for the town council to discuss the CBDS. At the last meeting, I've mentioned it three times, and the then-president Moore did ask for it to be on the agenda at the last time, but obviously, it's not here tonight, and it's probably partly because of newcomers into all this. But I still would like the CBDS to be discussed. That kind of was like, just to clarify a lot of stuff, so I am looking forward to that being discussed. And I'm hoping that while the intention of this revitalization is good, some of it still needs to be tweaked, and I'm hoping that that's still a possibility, that this can be amended in some ways, so I'm looking to see if that's a possibility before it becomes totally in effect. And the other thing, I know stipends were voted on at the last meeting, approved, and I know we're not voting as citizens yet for a while, but I just want to put this bug in the ear. While I realize the hard work that everybody does, I personally was never in favor of stipends, and certainly not at a $5,000 stipend. I think that's too much, and I know you compare to other towns, but we don't know what their budget is. So at $45,000, does the town have that capability to add it to their budget? That's something that obviously has to be looked at, and I'm sure it would be. But I look at it, and I forgot about this. We're saying we can't mail things to people because we don't have enough money in the budget. Stamps are 68 cents now. If you do bulk, I know at work, it's 64 cents. If you take 64 cents, times it by 50,000, that's 35, or $32,000. That's $15,000 less than what it would be to pay the councilors. So if we have money for stipends, we certainly should have money for mailing, and 75,000 letters going out at 64 cents would be 48,000. So it's just something to think about, for the citizens to think about, councilors to think about, the budget to think about. If we don't have enough money for stamps and mailing to patients, people, how can we afford to pay? And it's not to say that I don't appreciate what everybody does, but, you know, we have to look at what we're saying we can't afford, but then we're going to pay something like that. So I just, that's something just to be thinking about, so appreciate it, and good luck. Thanks.
Anybody else like to speak in citizens' open forum?
Rebecca Fleisch-Cadaro, 135 Deerfield Drive. Congratulations to the new councilors and the new officers, and thanks to all of you for the privilege of speaking. I've already expressed my thanks last week for the unanimous support for the pride flag raising on June third, and I hope I'll have the opportunity tonight to reiterate those thanks for the highly anticipated Juneteenth flag raising on June seventeenth. Your time is valuable, and this will be the third time in six weeks that you've heard me speak to the symbolism of the Juneteenth and pride flag raisings, having the flags raised and then displayed at our academy building. But as one of the co-chairs of the Juneteenth 2024 Committee, along with co-chair Janice Campbell Means behind me, I feel a particular urgency that you hear from me. More importantly, you've heard from members of the LGBTQ+ and African-American communities relating how meaningful it was to them when they first became aware of these flags, a welcome symbol from this town they wouldn't have anticipated just a few years ago. I think that last sentiment is all you need to know. These flag raisings reinforce the words in the 2016 Town Council proclamation on display downstairs in this academy building, which include the words "A goal of enhancing and creating an atmosphere of community welcome and inclusiveness." Thank you again for listening, and Janice and I look forward to seeing you at the Juneteenth 2024 celebration. Mark your calendars, Saturday, June 22nd, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. on the grounds of Bridgewater State University, who are partnering with us this year. Search for Juneteenth 2024, Bridgewater, Mass. And depending on tonight's vote, we hope to see y'all here at Juneteenth Flag Raising on June 17th at 3:30 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Or citizens' open forum?
Good evening, Keith Beul, 10 Fieldcrest Drive. I want to join in congratulating the new councilors and thanking you all for your service. I'm here tonight to talk twofold. The first is as the father of a transgender son and someone who loves Bridgewater and loves his son, I want to thank you for your vote at your last meeting regarding the raising of the pride flag. I also want to support the raising of the Juneteenth flag. I think there's no better way for a town to show that all are welcome than somebody to drive in around our common and see the statues and the monuments to the members of our community who gave their lives for freedoms that we all enjoy, and to see those flags flying along with the United States flag is just a picture-perfect way of us showing, you know, that Bridgewater welcomes everybody. It's not just about pride, it's not just about LGBTQ, it's not just about Juneteenth. It's our town saying that anybody that drives around that circle, and if anybody knows, there's a lot of people that drive around that circle every day, it shows that we are here and we are welcoming to anybody who wants to come to our town, enjoy our businesses, worship at our churches, go to a college that's wonderful, you know, and just feel safe at all times. So I applaud you for your vote for last meeting. I look for your vote for this meeting, you know, and I think we, I think we got it going. Now I'll shift as one of the seven members of the mighty band of July Fourth. It's, the fundraising has started. The number is huge again, and we've started early and we've gotten some great early support. Barrett's on eighteen hosts us every Monday night. They've set up a golf tournament. We're going to have events at the Black Hat, at the Greyhound, a few other companies. We have cans all around. We have scratch ticket raffles, May, June, got two more to do that. July Fourth is one of the greatest days our town has. Anybody who's been there will agree with me, you know, and we, the mighty band of seven, which used to be five, but we got two new members, so we're growing. We love doing it. We do it because we love America, we do it because we love this town, you know, and we get a lot of help from businesses and citizens, and we're going to need it again this year. The thermometer will soon be going up, and I promise to take it down the day after July Fourth. But if you see our events on Facebook, keep an eye out, the calendars will be out of all the events that we're going to have between now and the day, and we hope it's, again, one of those days that people walk away. People come from all over, it's not just Bridgewater, they come all over and see what we do as a town together. Together we can, and together we will, and we're just looking for that same type of financial support. I will say that, and this is not anything against anything, but this is a fully privately-funded event. $50,000 we have to raise, and we're starting, and we're going to go, and we look for everybody's support. So when you're talking to the people that you represent, put a little plug in for the July Fourth, we'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else in this isn't open forum?
Ray Jamian, 221 Alders Road. In my opinion, the greatest evil that the founders of this country allowed was slavery, and we're still living with the results of it today. I think the least thing that this town can do is to allow for the commemoration of Juneteenth to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, we will move forward. Appointments, we have none this evening. We will move forward to hearings. First hearing up is Budget Order OFY 25-001, FY 2025 Annual Town Budget.
Mr. President, can I just, our new veterans agent is here, and we did not, traditionally, we recognize veterans that we've lost at the beginning of the meeting, and I just wanted to see if it was okay if we could circle back and do that.
Most definitely.
And also introduce Greg Martin, who's our new veterans agent, and Greg has hit the ground running fast, and there's a bit of catch-up work to do, as councilors know, but with that, I would introduce Greg. Very good.
Greg Martin. Thank you for the introduction, Mr. Dutton, and thank you for entrusting me in this really important position. I'm truly honored to be your next veteran service officer, and always, will always do my best to serve the veterans of this community. As most of you know, we've always started the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the veterans that have fallen. We've continued that tradition since September, but in the absence of a veteran service officer, we didn't have the names. So I've gone retroactively, and I've gotten these names, and unfortunately, there's been 26 veterans in this community that have passed since September, so here, we're going to honor those veterans. If you could just pause for just one second, Mr. Dutton, I just want to say one more thing, and maybe you could just go back to, okay, perfect. I'll name the names. At the end of these 26 names, we'll play taps, so I just asked respectfully if folks could stand up, place their hand over their heart during the playing of taps, which is the tradition for the playing of taps. So if you could start, Mr. Dutton, please. Daryl Gesner. Matthew Mullin. Richard Caldwell. Frank Benson. James Niegel. Frederick White. Robert Bratt. Bernard Numi. Joseph Biancini Jr. George DeChambeau. Anthony Imichetti. Robert Wood. Robert Daniloff. Alfred Blanchett Jr. Peter Loney. Henry McLaughlin Jr. Donald Wilfong. Robert Leo Miller. Alan Warren. Louis Capiello Jr. Mitchell Chuckrin Jr. Betty Ann Correa. Joseph Mariano. Willie Wiggins Sr. Peter Conway. James Dolan. Please rise. We'll improvise today. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. And again, I'll actually ask for a moment of silence for all the deceased members of the town that passed on his presentation. Thank you. All righty, moving forward. Okay, hearings. First hearing up is the Budget Order OFY 25-001, FY 2025 Annual Town Budget. I will note that we will start this hearing at 7:30 p.m., and I'll open with asking if town manager Mr. Dutton?
Point of order? I wanted to ask a point of order and see if the other councilors consent to the budget, the four pages worth, which is on the website, being placed there for the townspeople at home. the four pages worth, which is on the website, being placed there for the townspeople at home to see. This is a very abbreviated version of the budget.
I guess it's like it's up there, so it's, I believe it's fine.
Yep.
Okay?
No, we usually do that, so.
Okay.
That will be coming?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So again, I wanted to ask Mr. Dutton if he wanted to open up any comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would only have a few limited comments. This budget, the FY 25, 2025 budget, the fiscal year starts July 1st and ends June 30th. Just for a little bit of a refresher. The, this FY 25 budget was particularly challenging due to a reduction in some of our revenue line items, including licenses and permit fees, as well as a reduction in the increase in state aid. We're actually not quite sure what our unrestricted state aid will be. The governor's budget gave us a percentage increase of, I believe, 3%. The House bill gave us an increase of 1%, and then the Senate, which I've not reviewed that yet, but the Senate generally tries to come back to something closer in, to the, to the governor's budget, at least in years past. So, so we have, we do have a fairly conservative budget that is relying on revenues, obviously, real estate and personal property tax revenues, as well as what we refer to as local receipts, which include things that licenses and permits, motor vehicle excise, and a variety of other, other funding sources. One of the items that I will point out to the council that you do vote on, these particular revenue items that are on your screen, ambulance receipts reserved is the account where all of the ambulance billings, both Medicare, Medicaid, and private insurance reimbursements are placed. Every year, we take a certain amount of that out of the ambulance receipt reserved account to fund the general fund budget. Title V, we have a revolving fund that, that funds Title V upgrades for qualifying residents, and that, we take money out of that to fund a portion of the general fund. Enterprise funds pay a little bit of money right across the board to offset the cost of mostly the finance work that goes on within those enterprise funds. Conservation receipts, again, are a separate account that gets funded with proceeds, or with fee funds that are paid to the conservation commission, and, and so we take a little bit of those out on an annual basis. Energy funds in the amount of $150,000 come from the credits, solar credits, that we, that we secure because of our use of the solar field, that we have a power purchase agreement with. The Elm Street Diff, this is the fund that, that was created by the council some years ago to fund the $8 million improvements to Elm Street. And it's funded with the improvements, if you recall, funded with the, the improvements on Elm Street, and we transfer an amount of money that can pay the, pay for the bond that was floated to do the construction on Elm Street. And finally, there's a fund that holds golf receipts, and that is also transferred out by your vote to fund the general fund budget. So in total, excess funding of $3,885,294 goes to fund the general fund budget from, from those respective, those respective funds. That's in addition to the $69,474,206 that goes to, comes out of taxation to fund the balance of the budget. And I don't know if you would like me to just run through some of the particulars of the budget. Generally, this year is relatively easy to explain because there really have been no major changes, no major staffing changes, no major events which have altered the budget. As I say, we, we started this budget season based upon the resolution that the council voted back in, I believe it was January or February. And the, the annual council resolution generally asks us to provide a fairly conservative budget to make sure that we can sustain the operations that we currently have and sustain the number of employees that we currently have, and then certainly can withstand any downturn in the economy. I think we've done that with this budget, and right across the board. With the exception of, I'll say, we moved around some funds to make sure that we could separately show human resources. So some budgets have dropped, and human resources, we've created essentially a department, at least through the budget, that should have been there for the last few years. But, but that really is the only substantial or dramatic change. There are no dramatic changes to the budget. Mr. Fitzgibbons mentioned the annual Bridgewater-Ranham School District that is funded to the tune of $36,829,096. Represents rough, a little over 50% of our total budget. Well, I shouldn't say it does, but our education expenses make up a little over 50% of our total budget. Otherwise, fairly, a fairly, I don't want to call it bland because that's not what we want to call it, but it is a fairly conservative budget that reflects mostly the same spending for the same items that we had last year, so.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. I will now ask if there are any general questions from the public. Would you like to come up and ask a question?
Point of order? May the council ask questions?
We're coming up to council questions in a moment.
Thank you.
Does anyone from the public wish to speak in favor of the budget? Come on up.
Carlton on Austin Street, I was trying to respond to your first question.
Oh, okay.
I'm the chair of the energy committee, and I know nothing about the $150,000 from the credits going back to the general fund. I think that kind of communication is critical for the council to consider in the future. We have committees, boards, and commissions who are poorly used in this town. We need more input. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other general questions from the public at this time? Okay, seeing none. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in favor? Seeing none. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Now, are there any questions from the town councilors?
I have some questions, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Albert, go ahead.
If you could go back to the first page. Keep on going. Yes, I just wanted to ask questions. Town manager is, if I'm correct, 609,000. How many are in your department? And I understand, I was told that there is a Kim Williams who's been on leave of absence and wants to assume a hybrid job situation.
Point of order.
Is that true?
Questioning about employment is a violation of the charter by the council. It's not appropriate.
So taken, counselor. Okay. So you can answer the questions as to how many employees there are. Another thing I would like to note is, it has not been shown yet, but our budget is half a million dollars out of whack in the red. Is that so? If you could flip all the way to the bottom. That's what I saw online.
Okay, so let me, so we have four employees in town manager's office. But let me, we certainly, one of the, one of the things we must do is present you a balanced budget. So there's an adjustment, that, that $458,092 is an adjustment for the things that we are required to pay, the state and county charges. So it's not, it's not a out of balance. It's, it's just showing on our budget that gets voted exactly what we're obligated to, obligated to pay regardless of.
I'm glad we're not in the red. That's very good.
Anything else?
I have some questions about procedure, which will be later on in the meeting. Thank you.
No problem. And the other councilors have any questions regarding the budget? All right, seeing none. All right, so I'll close the hearing at this time. It's 7:41. So just to reiterate, you know, this hearing was advertised on the, in the enterprise and website. This was reviewed by budget and finance, and they voted three to zero to recommend at their 41624 meeting. And finance committee voted six to zero to recommend as well at their 429 meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the budget?
Don't move. A second.
In a second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Albert.
I wish that all of the line items of the committee had been presented to the townspeople at this public forum and shown where savings were made, where expenses went up, and so forth. My view is that this is being done very hastily without public input. That's just my comment. Thank you.
Everything is posted on the website, the agenda of the council, and everything you see here in the packet was, was posted.
Yes. FYI, there are many who are not online.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
No problem. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none. I'll bring this to a vote. All those in favor of passing this budget, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none. Motion passes. All right, item G, license transactions. We have none this evening. Presentations, we also have none this evening. We will move right on to town managers' reports. Back to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a few items to cover tonight. First one is Spring Street. Actually, I will just make a mention. Mr. Valdi asked questions at the beginning of the meeting, and I'll just, for those new councilors, and a reminder for current councilors or, or councilors that have been here a while. I will take those questions. I will answer those at a following meeting. Either I or whoever is appropriate to answer those questions. It may be the council. It may be me. But we do put that on as an agenda item. But, but that is, that is for us to answer specific questions for, that get asked in the prior meeting. Sometimes we won't have an answer for the next meeting, and if that's the case, then it'll come up again at a prior meeting to that, or at a future meeting to, to that. But I do have a few items to discuss or mention. Give you an update on Spring Street. The Town River Landing area, we have had a discussion. I think many of the councilors know that we are looking to put some type of gazebo or covering there so that that area can be better used by visitors and, and folks using the, the landing into the Town River. And we have reached out to Bristol Plymouth Technical School. They have put this project on their list for the fall of 2024, which is good news. Our town engineer has laid out the site and will generate the required conservation commission notice of intent for filing within the next month or so there. So DPW is working with an architect to provide the, the basic plan, which Bristol Plymouth students can use to construct the pavilion. And, and we do have a, already have a rough template of, or a picture of what we'd like the pavilion to look like so that the architect can, can make, make up the plans to reflect something close to that. We, fortunately, our roadways department was able to do some additional clearing and stumping down on, on the site and spread some additional recycled asphalt in order to provide a little bit more stable footing in part of the, part of that site. And, and finally, we do have some money set aside to do a little bit of paving there, and we will do that paving when other paving work is being done in town so that we don't have to pay for the mobilization of, of a separate job. We can sort of add it on to, to the work that gets done on, on a particular road. So that's what I have on Town River Landing. It looks great down there. And I think there's a very nice lineup of, of summer events to be had down there, so. And there have been a few popular events so far, so I hope folks get a chance to go down and see it and enjoy it, so. But I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Any questions? Mr. McKinnon?
For you to the town manager. Are we still going off Abington's design?
Yep. Yep, I didn't mention Abington specifically because we'd never want to give credit to another town, but that is, that is the design we're kind of looking to replicate. And it's, it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful structure, so.
I just want to say thank you too for, for you and the whole DPW getting down there that week, cleaning it up before first responders. They, that made a huge difference for everything down there.
That's good to hear. That's very good to hear.
Any other questions from any councilors? Seeing none. Tire pile issue update?
As, I keep wanting to say former councilors. I'm not going to, I'll struggle through this a little bit. How to describe old coun, I don't want to say old councilor by any means.
So I ran to the town clerk.
All the council should know that there is a, an old, old tire dump that sits on, on, well, we're not quite sure on whose property it sits, but it does sit off of Water Street, sort of on the backside of Bridgewater State. And, and we are, I have asked BSU to take, do a site tour with us and as well as our engineers so that we can figure out on whose property that, that tire dump actually sits. It probably straddles a property line, but a portion of it may be on Bridgewater State's property. So depending on the precise location, we can then determine who, whose property it is and who, in theory, would be responsible for a cleanup. So that, that work is, is ongoing and probably will take some time for us to do the, do some surveying so, so we can figure that out ourselves. Any questions on that one?
Any questions from any councilors on that?
If we, what, what type of cost are we looking at for cleanup?
We would not be looking to clean it up because we can't clean it up. It's not, not town property. If it were town property, obviously, we would have to clean up on our hands. But since it's private property, or arguably might, might be partially state property, we can't expend the funds on that. So it won't be a cost to us.
Good.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dutton. Next one, science issues, signage issues around the town.
There were a few signage issues, I think Council McKinnon brought to our attention. I think we repaired the Hayward intersection. There was a flashing stop sign that needed a battery replacement that was done. There was a missing no left turn sign on Hale Street where it intersects with Broad. That was replaced. And then we are working on speed signs on 104, on the Plymouth Street, Plymouth Street side of 104, so working to get those either placed or replaced, as the case may be. Again, happy to answer questions.
Yes, Mr. McKinnon.
Is that on the state to replace our signs since 104, for some reason, is a state road in Bridgewater, but not in other towns?
No, that's actually on us. It's, although it's a state-numbered highway, it's actually a town-owned road. So it's, that gets a little confusing. To my knowledge, the only state-owned stretch is 18. Well, the highway, yeah, obviously, the, yeah, 495, 24, so forth. But the stretch right here on Bedford stops, state ownership stops right about out here and then picks up again on the other side of the tracks, so. But I think that's the only state-owned highway that we have. Yeah.
Okay, very good. Any other questions on that? Seeing none. Winter Street paving update?
Winter Street, I just want to make sure that the council knows the extent of what we're doing on Winter Street. This is not just a simple paving job. It's, it's something quite more than that. The existing road, to begin with, I, I know some, some of the councils know this, but the existing road does not sit within the town's right-of-way. It strays off and goes into private property, so the entire road needs to be realigned and, and in order to fit within the town's layout or the town's ownership. To do that, we have to replace or relocate five electric poles. After that, the road will be completely taken up. All the drainage will be replaced and enhanced and that is possibly a six to eight, eight-month job, so it's not a simple, simple pave. I would love it if it was, but unfortunately, it's not. And right now, we are on the list with Eversource to do the, I'm sorry, National Grid or Verizon, actually, to do the pole relocation and that, we're on their list. But, but that is, that is almost ready to go. There are a few additional engineering things that we have to do there to get that done, but that'll start soon, so happy to answer questions on that one.
Mr. Jase?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Dutton, for those comments about Winter Street. I, I have addressed Winter Street with you previously, as you know. I've received additional comments from residents on Winter Street with respect to the, to the detour that's necessary because of the condition of Flag Street. So I wonder, first of all, what would be the plan with respect to the continuing detour on Flag Street with, whenever Winter Street construction actually begins?
That's a perfect question, leads me right into my next update. Flag Street. Right now, we are looking, just because we have had a significant number of sinkholes in the, in the Flag Street, we are looking at tackling that one first and relatively quickly. We will only be able to do the, the drainage. Right now, we've got funding to do the drainage on, on Flag Street and we, we look, we're looking to start that as soon as we can. That is, is more of, of an emergency at this point than, than not. And future work, which will have to be put off, but future work on Flag Street will involve water pipe replacement, sidewalk installations and then replacing, again, the whole roadbed and putting a, a better base down on Flag. So in terms of timing, Flag Street will come first and as soon as we get that done well enough so that people can drive over it safely, then, then we'll start on Winter and divert all the traffic to Flag.
So you would anticipate the truck traffic can resume on Flag after that?
Correct.
The drainage work has been done?
Yep.
All right.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. So happy to answer questions on any of those.
Anything else on Flag and who did you want to mention, Mr. Dutton?
No, I just want to let the council know that we do continue to, to seek funding for the balance of the work on Flag Street, but we know we have to do the drainage. We have the funding to do the drainage and we have to do the drainage because that's a safety issue right now.
Very good. Any other questions from any councils? Seeing none. Fire hydrant status update?
The fire hydrant status update, we have, currently, we have seven out of service. One is due to an accident. One is leaking and will be relocated, we believe, and five are on a normal replacement program. So that's sort of our current status with fire hydrants. We do have a normal replacement program when it's not interrupted by cars hitting other, other hydrants, but, but, but that's where we stand right now. And just out of curiosity, I asked how many actual hydrants we had in town? And we have ten thousand five hundred hydrants in Bridgewater, so.
Just a few.
I would not have guessed that.
Mr. Lindy?
Just to follow up through you to the town manager, what about the one right out here? Is that the accident or?
That is, actually, that's not the accident. That's a leaking, that's a, got a leaking valve and the water department said that based on how close that is to the, the road, they are going to relocate that likely to the other side of the, of the building.
Any timetable?
Soon. I don't have a specific timetable.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions regarding fire hydrants? Seeing none. And finally, fire station update?
Fire station update, we are waiting the last permit issued by the Army Corps. It's thirty days they have to issue it. We are just in the hopper to get processed. Otherwise, we are ready to go. The contractor is ready to mobilize and clear and grub. The foundation contractor is ready to go once that clearing is finished and the goal is to have the walls up before winter. And so the, the contract, general contractor is, is raring to go to make that happen.
Very good. Questions from any councils? One for myself. So approximately, when was the clearing going to start taking place?
The day after we get the, the Army Corps go-ahead, which would, should be within the next seven to ten days.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Yes, I could say if any councils had any future things that the town manager wanted to have them look into.
Two quick things. Grove Street, what are we doing there? Because, I mean, we still have the Jersey Barries up and everything and, I mean, changing that, the one-way direction did not prevent accidents from happening. They just moved down to Maple Street and via us doing that, you just have cars flying down Spring Hill Ave, Worcester Street and all that now instead of being able to just go right through the college. I mean, in my opinion, that was a horrible idea because like I just said, the accidents just moved one street down and now you have a bunch of kids watching out for speeding cars on side streets now. And then this could just be a discussion now, I don't know. Is there a reason on, and I'm not trying to sound biased because we know I live on Spring Street, but the no turn on red at the intersection, is that because the train is there? Because there are multiple times when I'm trying to get home and the whole right side slammed and it, it just, I think it would help the traffic there if that no turn on red wasn't there. Because, I mean, I drive up eighteen every single day and a lot of the intersections that did have no turn on reds are gone now.
It's just so I'm clear, is that the intersection, Spring Street and Broad?
Yeah, say I'm right next to Burger King, taking a right onto my street, going that way. You can't take a no turn on red there. In, in a sense, car, it doesn't happen all the time, but cars can back, the traffic can back up more because you can't take a.
So if you're going down Broad Street, taking a right turn on red?
Yep.
Okay, I can check. Yeah, onto Spring. Okay. Nope, I can check.
All right, thank you.
Any other councils have anything for the town manager for next one?
Yep.
Mr. Dunn, quick update on the Styles and Hart project. I know a lot's been happening up there, so I think it'd be good to just give a quick update. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Dutton, for that report. All right, moving on. Discussions, we have none. Does anyone have any committee reports that they'd like to share? Obviously, with the change in, change in council, there's going to be obviously change in all the, on the committees, so I would like to work on putting that together as quickly as possible. So if anyone has any particular thoughts or ideas that they have, what particular committees they'd like to be on, please send me an email so we can work on putting those committees together.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Could I ask if we could possibly move up petition P two oh two four dash oh two one on the Juneteenth?
Taking item.
Out of order?
F out of order under legislation for action. I have a motion to take item F, petition P two oh two four dash zero two one, resolution ordering Juneteenth out of order. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? So moved. We will take petition P two oh two four dash two zero, oh, zero two one, resolution ordering Juneteenth out of order. Let me bring up this here. All right, so this measure was not referred to any committee. Fourteen days has elapsed, therefore, we may vote on this this evening. This was originally introduced by Councilors Chase and Robinson. Do either one of you would like to speak toward it first at all? Mr. Jase?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I would just like to say that I'm grateful to the support that this resolution has received both from the council and from the community at large. We've proceeded to, to raise the Juneteenth flag for the past few years. It's become, I think, an important part of the town's annual celebration of Juneteenth, which of course is a town holiday here in, in Bridgewater. And I very much look forward to the, to the fine work of the various sponsors who put this together annually and make it such a, a wonderful and inclusive event. I don't know if Counselor Robinson, if you have any particular comment?
Mr. Robinson?
Okay.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right, so again, this was held at the council level. It wasn't referred to any committee, so I will ask for a motion for approval.
So moved.
So moved. Second. Second by choosing. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Going back to the beginning. Item and a legislation for action. Budget order O F Y twenty-five dash zero zero two, F Y twenty-two-five Water Enterprise Fund budget. Budget and Finance voted three oh to recommend at their meeting. Finance Committee voted six nothing to approve as well. Does the town manager want to make any comments on this at this time?
Nothing really too much to add on, on this one. It's, it's reflects same, same service levels, excuse me, same service levels as the year passed and again, it was a very conservative budget. So, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the town manager on it? Mrs. Ellenberg?
I just wanted to know in terms of our water situation and the enterprise fund, will any of that be going towards updating our water situation?
The retained earnings will probably be, we haven't incurred any additional bond requirements or any additional bonding on the project, so return, retained earnings will probably go over the year to continue the, the water pipe replacement project that's, that's an ongoing and long-term item, but, but other than that, there really are no huge capital items in the, in the, in this budget certainly.
How extensive is the water pipe substitution that you're going to be doing in town?
Overall, I can get you the exact figures, but it's extremely expensive, in the hundreds of dollars per foot range. It is, it is not inexpensive, but, but needs to be done. And that, that actually will be the subject of, of an upcoming council meeting. We'll have a, a full breakdown of, of water issues and where we are and where we plan ongoing. So that's upcoming, but in terms of this budget, it does, it does budget for some retained earnings and, and those retained earnings, portion of those will go towards water pipe replacement here and there.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Yep. Second by Mr. McKinnon. Any, any other question? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, budget order O F Y twenty-five dash zero zero three, F Y twenty-five Sewer Enterprise Fund budget. Budget and Finance voted three oh to recommend at their four sixteen meeting and Finance Committee voted six to zero to recommend at their four twenty-nine meeting. Again, to the town manager, any comments on this?
Similar scenario. Same, essentially same services as last year. I'm happy to report that we're almost fully staffed within the sewer division, which is good news, but, but much the same spending as last year. We will have a substantial increase in F Y twenty-six due to some of the sewer renovation projects going on now, I think as the council knows or, or may not. We are doing a comprehensive sewer plant upgrade in two phases, one and all driven by federal and state mandates. One is for nitrogen reduction, the other is for phosphorus reductions. Phase one is over forty million dollars, but thanks to our finance director and the finance department, we have been able to secure a zero-interest loan and we've also been able to secure principal forgiveness that cuts at least ten million, about eleven million dollars from that portion of the project, so that's great for the ratepayers. The, the other phase, phosphorus, is in the planning stages. Our initial projections on how much that will cost are, are mind-boggling at this point and so we are working with our engineers to request from DEP and EPA a delay on the implementation of that, that piece of, of the two-phase project. So, so that is, that is, again, something that will come up on, on a future council agenda, but, but all of these infrastructure projects are not inexpensive by any means and so we know that we're doing everything we can to try to chase down funding outside of the ratepayers and, and so we've had some success with that and we'll, we'll continue to, to beat the doors down to make sure we can do whatever we can to offset the impact to the ratepayers. But that, in terms of this budget, this is purely operational and, and we do have budgeted to make sure we've got some retained earnings, which in, in the enterprise fund arena is very similar to free cash on the general fund side. So we, we want to make sure that we're budgeting enough so that we have retained earnings so that we can handle, you know, unexpected things that, that come along during the year. Obviously, it comes to you for a transfer vote, but we want to make sure that we can handle those within the enterprise fund, so. So that is, yeah, that, that's what I have for sewer.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. All right, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chase, a first and, and a second by Mr. Lindy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on. Budget order O F Y twenty-five dash zero zero four, F Y twenty-five Transfer Station Enterprise Fund budget. Budget and Finance voted three oh to recommend at their four sixteen meeting and Finance Committee voted six to zero to recommend at their four twenty-nine meeting. Any additional comments on this, Mr. Dutton?
Nothing except for it's, again, very conservative, pretty much the same as last year. I will, for the council's benefit, I will let you know that transfer station, transfer stations are interesting businesses and it's not as sort of consistent and, and, and the same year, year in and year out. There's a lot of volatility in trash disposal expense. There's a lot of volatility in, in what we can either get for our recyclables or what we have to pay to get rid of our recyclables and, and over the past probably five to, to seven years, we've seen a dramatic shift so that we pay a substantial amount now to, to part with our recyclables rather than the, sort of the old days when we used to get paid for the recyclables, so. So it's a, I only say that just to point out how, how relatively volatile it is and so we do keep our eyes on this budget throughout the year, as we do all budgets, but certainly this one, we, we want to keep our eye on to make sure that, you know, we're, we're staying within the budget and, and bringing in the revenues to support the expenses that we have, so that's it.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Do I have a motion to approve? Question first.
Mr. Dunn, how many employees work for the transfer station?
We have one employee that works for the transfer station and over the years, we have had a couple of volunteers that will go down when, when it's busy and he's quite satisfied with that arrangement. You know, we looked to fund some part-time work and that was not, not needed, but certainly we know that, you know, over the next probably number of years, we'll, we'll have to look at the, the staffing and make some changes, but, but right now, just one employee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Second. Motion, second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Item D, budget order OFY 25-005, Authorization of Revolving Funds. Again, Budget and Finance voted three zero to recommend at their four sixteen meeting, and Finance Committee voted six to zero to recommend at their four twenty-nine meeting. Mr. Dutton, any comments?
Nope, just by way of explanation, on an annual basis, the council, as part of its budget process, votes to reauthorize these funds. These, all four now, we only have four, pared some of these down, but these four are set up to cover the expenditures of whatever the fund is for with the receipts without having to come back to you for votes on every transfer. So as you can see, there's, Town Clerk's Office has a fund for the street listing, the book that gets published on an annual basis. Parks and Rec has fees or fund associated with their seasonal staff. Council on Aging has a revolving fund for programs for seniors and the community, and then finally, the library has a revolving fund for its fines and fees. And all of those spending limits are set by the council, and I can tell you that we haven't come close to hitting any of those spending levels over the past several years.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Any questions for Mr. Dutton?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, I have a motion to approve, right, or a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McKinnon. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item E, order OFY 25-006, CPA Reserve Accounts for FY 2025. Budget and Finance voted three zero to recommend at their four sixteen meeting, and Finance Committee voted six zero to recommend at their four twenty-nine meeting. Any comments, Mr. Dutton?
Again, just by way of explanation for new councilors and a refresher for the old councilors, we have, community preservation funds come into the town through surcharge on tax bills, as well as some percentage of a state match, which can vary year to year. The law requires that we put ten percent of our revenues into three different buckets, so that's thirty percent of the revenues get allocated to three subject matter buckets. One is open, very generally open space, one is historic, and the other one is housing. And this year is a little different, this is the first time that we have not funded the historic line, and there's a reason for that, and the reason is that I think the committee decided that it wants to try to free up as many resources for other projects as it could, and the ten percent that would normally be put into the historic resources bucket is more than accommodated by the vote for the funding for this academy building, which is a debt that gets paid out of community preservation funds until the bond is satisfied. So it's a little different this year, but certainly presented to you for a vote. In addition to the three buckets of ten percent that are required to be allocated, there's an administrative line which covers other community preservation committee expenses, and that can be funded up to five percent and no greater, so that is also reflected in this budget. So I just wanted to give you some clarity on that. The Keith Homestead purchase, I believe we're in the second to last year of the payments for the Keith Homestead, and so that will be coming off of the books, so to speak, in FY 27, and that funding will be available for distribution to the three buckets. But again, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Any questions for the town manager?
I do, yes, thank you. About the historic, again, I have heard from citizens that the Yellow House on Main Street, which is very historic, will be torn down for the development in Bridgewater. I would like to know if that's so, or is that rumor going around? If that house was to be demolished, I would like the bucket for the historic to be restored and that house to stay because there is, it's one of the most beautiful houses in Bridgewater.
I don't know the specifics of the house. I have, my understanding is that it's either been sold or it's in the process of being sold. I don't know the specifics of the future of that house, but I think that is a perfect opportunity for me to explain, kind of outside the budget, but explain that the Community Preservation Committee has essentially a visioning exercise that they do every year. This year is sort of a five-year visioning, and that will be getting underway, I think, in June, and lasts for several months, so that's a perfect opportunity to make sure that the Community Preservation Committee takes that kind of project under consideration.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask another question?
Go ahead.
So then that means that more of it is going towards housing. Is any of the historic preservation going towards the housing that is slated for Bridgewater?
Nope, the way it works is that the Community Preservation Committee takes in applications, so any, literally, almost anybody can apply for community preservation funds, including, in theory, private homeowners. You know, I know in the past churches, there are churches that have applied under the historic designation, but they receive those applications, they determine if the project is, at a threshold level, is eligible for funding through community preservation funds, and then if it is, they decide that it is, then it gets a full application. So to my knowledge, there is no project in front of the...
Main Street, does the Historic Commission ever solicit applications?
I don't know that, I don't know, I don't think the Historic Commission has ever applied for community preservation funding. The town has on a number of occasions.
For particular places in town, yeah. I'm sorry, what was that?
The town has been an applicant for a number of projects, including Styles and Hart Park renovation, the baseball, you know, Legion Field lighting, to name a few, but I'm not aware of, not aware of anybody, you know, private groups or citizens with applications in front of the CPC right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second, motion, the second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, and we already went over the last petition out of order, so that wraps up what we had for legislation for action. Moving on to old business, we have none. New business, we also have none this evening, so that brings us back to citizens' comments. We will open up the podium for citizens' comments. Please come forward, again, name and address in three minutes.
Lorraine Powers, Forty-One Sunrise Drive. I'm a member of Bridgewater Communities for Civil Rights, and I just want to thank all the councilors for your unanimous support of the resolution for us to raise the Juneteenth flag again this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else, please? Come on up.
Thank you, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. I just, as far as the pride flag and the Juneteenth flag, I'd like to see that this is just an automatic thing every year, so that we don't have to waste the time of the council every year, everybody come, do the resolution, everybody talks, and we vote for it, which is good. Why can't we just make it automatic? Is there a way of doing that, so this is just something that's automatically done every year, so it's done? So I'm hoping that can be done. I don't know how that's available to do, but that's what I would like to see, so be one less thing to have to vote on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nope.
Rebecca Fleisch-Godira, Deerfield Drive. I had said earlier that I hoped I could stand up here this meeting and thank you again for the resolution for the Juneteenth flag raising, so I wanted to thank you for that. Also, just a quick note that based on how the ordinance is written for the flag raisings, I'm not real sure that it's possible to just have this be automatic every year, so I suggest that if people have an opportunity to go out and look up the ordinance and see how it's written, and they get in touch with the town councilors to see if that's even possible, something that we can do, but we do appreciate the opportunity to speak each year, and again, the positive reception that we receive, so thank you.
Thank you.
Gina Griscony, for Ball Avenue, also Chair of Community Preservation. Elegies are getting to me tonight, so I'm sorry for my voice. First, I want to thank the council for supporting, town manager for supporting community preservation, and I would like to say our meetings are open to the public. We would love to talk to any of you, especially new councilors, to explain what we do. We meet the fourth Wednesday of every month. You're welcome to come. We also have, we're just, Kaltenhahn, who's here, he's also our vice chair, and he has put together, we have worked diligently on it, policies and procedures too, and that should be on the CPA website soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Going once, going two. All right. Thank you. All right, that brings us to council comments. I will start with Councilor Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I would just like to, once again, congratulate and welcome all the new councilors, and it's certainly very good that we have this year several new councilors, as we did after the town election last year. So there's been a considerable turnover, if you will, in the ranks of the town council, and I think that's a very positive sign. It certainly shows engagement and a willingness of so many people in the town to step forward and take on a role that, as I think all of us are aware, candid times require a good deal of our time and attention. And once again, I congratulate you, I welcome you, and I look forward to working with each of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Council Murphy?
Yeah, just to echo those sentiments, thank you for those that spoke tonight. I appreciated hearing those stories. Thank you for coming forward, thank you for the school community members who also attended the meeting tonight, and congratulations to the three new councilors, welcome aboard, and excited to be working with all of you. That's it, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Lindy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to congratulate and welcome the new councilors. It's nice to see some new faces and new ideas. I wanted to congratulate our new council president and vice president, and looking forward to working with you. And I do want to make sure we continue to appreciate and thank Merrily Hunt for her years of service to this town. She has a little extended stay because the newly-elected clerk is not going to be sworn in until, I believe, Thursday, and to come for this last meeting and do such a wonderful job, I loved getting that certificate when she swore me in, so she just did an outstanding job, and she'll be missed, and I'm sure the new clerk will do well, and just proves that every vote counts in this town. That was such a close election.
Very close.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindy. Mr. McKinnon?
Just want to echo everyone's comments on welcoming and congratulating the new councilors freshman year. Fun time, I'm on my sophomore, so...
I'll ask you.
I also want to thank everyone that came out to First Responder Day. It was pretty cool, we had a whole bunch of different towns there, I mean, you had as far as Plymouth, I believe Halifax was there, Middleborough, all these other towns were there, which was cool. And then, Mr. Perry, Dr. Perry, Mark Lindy, I want to say thank you a lot for coming to the town cleanup, because as you saw, only six other people came besides you, so it was good to see you guys do the three laps that you guys did to keep the center of town clean, so I appreciate that. And I don't think he's here anymore, but I do want to thank Al Serta for everything he does down on Spring Street and the Fire Effect team, and that's it for me, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKinnon. Council McGrath?
Thank you for the invite, and I want to thank everyone who voted for me and supported me and came out to vote, I appreciate it. I had a lot of positive input, and it's the first time I ran, so I really appreciated all the support. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Ellenberg?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the voters also who supported me, and I hope I will do a good job and be diligent on behalf of the citizens and bring openness to the process. Which brings me to a point of order, which I had alluded to earlier, and this is the time for the councilors to speak, is that correct?
Council comments, yeah.
Yes, okay. I had asked for things to be screen shared, which they have been, that's good, and I also ask that committee reports, the chairman come and speak to the council so that it would be visible and on the record to all. So I would like to make a motion to that effect.
Well, the committee reports are the council committees, not outside committees, just the council committees that we're asking for reports on.
Yes.
So it's just any of the councilors who have met and want to report on their committee action?
And outside committees as well, if it's pertinent to the development that comes to Bridgewater, for example, the planning board, we might want to hear from them.
That's not the portion of the meeting that, we don't bring an outside board to speak at that point.
Well, I was asking if we could do so as a new procedure.
These are council comments, so you cannot bring motions forward at council comments, it's an open meeting law violation.
Okay, all right, thank you. I guess I will put that on the agenda for future discussion then.
You can put that under discussion item.
Pardon?
You can put that under discussion items.
Discussion items, okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh... Let's see, Council Strickles?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to my fellow residents in District One who entrusted me with this position. I don't take it lightly, I don't take it for granted, and I am honored and privileged that one of the first votes that I got to cast was in regards to Juneteenth and raising the flag at this lovely building that we are sitting in today. I am grateful to be here, to be working alongside all of you, and to my newly-elected council women, hello. I'm very happy to be sitting amongst you and that we now have four strong women on this council to represent the people of Bridgewater to the best of our ability, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And to wrap it up, again, echoing all the sentiments that were said earlier, I'd thank all the...
We miss you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Susan.
Hi, Paul, sorry.
Not my fault. Council Robinson, Council Robinson, please.
That's okay. I mean, I'm pretty much going to reiterate what everybody else said too, so congratulations to our new councilors. I am excited to see this new mix-up here, so thank you for stepping up to serve and running in what was probably a very exciting election that we've had, the most exciting election we've probably had in years. Thank you also to you all who keep showing up, and particularly in support of our LGBTQ+ communities, for also supporting folks of color like myself and others, and thank you also for the very brilliant yet simple proposal around, like, can we just not have to keep proposing to put up the flags every year? So actually, I'm happy to say that Council Vice President, congratulations to Vice President and President Perry over there. Vice President Paul Murphy and I will be co-sponsoring an ordinance. Hopefully, we'll have some nice unanimous support, we'll see, to hopefully propose that we can do this in perpetuity. So thank you for the suggestions, this is the great thing about diverse perspectives.
Very good, thank you, and sorry that we missed you there. Again, to echo everyone's sentiments, thank you to all the folks that came out here tonight. Thank you to the new councilors, I look forward to working with all of you. I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you to the newly elected vice president. I look forward to working with you. And again, I thank you for all the support, and I look forward to leading us going forward in the coming months. Hopefully, we'll get a lot done. Hopefully, we'll continue to work together cohesively with great debate and and put Bridgewater first and foremost and move the town forward. That's what it's all about. So that's all I have for tonight. We do not need an executive session, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.